I want to order the Penn Trafford School Board meeting for March 9th at 7:00 PM. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance.
The United States of America and its universal law for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Uh, Mr. Lega, if you'd like to take roll call. Mr. President. Ms. Zissin.
Here.
Mr. Chassett.
Here.
Dr. Koshko.
Here.
Mr. Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Noel is absent. Mr. Neiman.
Here.
Mr. Petrusi.
Here.
Mr. Stovart.
Here.
Dr. Trey.
Here.
You have a floor, Mr. President.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Lega.
What?
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of your February 9th, 2015 meeting? Motion.
Second. Question. Question being called for, this will be, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All oppose no? Motion carried. Uh, Dr. Harris, information now.
Sure, first off, we have a substitute for our student unit representative, and it'll be Jake Lang this evening, he came right from baseball practice, so, he's gonna give us his update on what's going on at the high school.
Excuse my tired apologies. First off, I'd like to introduce myself, my name's Jake Lang, I'm a junior at Penn Trafford High School, as you said, I'm here for Lucas Johnson, I'd like to address the board and inform you all what we've been doing at the school. Recently, this past weekend, Student Unit held a senior citizen prom on March 7th. Uh, especially for its first time being held, we consider it an overall success, the attendees were extremely appreciative of what we did, and we see the event as only improving. CAP, our Community Action Program, will be hosting the 3rd grade Buddy Program on Wednesday, March 11th, close to 500 students will be gathering at the high school for the afternoon. The CAP program is grateful to the Penn Trafford administration for their supports of this inner-school activity, this is not overlooked. Lastly, the food drive will be concluded on March 16th. That was all, any questions, comments, concerns?
Any questions, comments, concerns? You did an excellent job, I really appreciate you helping.
Thank you for your time.
Next, we're gonna move on to our favorite part of the month, and this is our Students of the Month, and we're gonna start with our elementary school, and that's McCullough.
Thank you, Dr. Harris, uh, I'd like to introduce the elementary student of the month, uh, from McCullough, Alexa Rulo, come on up, Alexa. We know you do the hip-hop dance, so you're okay in front of the camera. Uh, Alexa's the daughter of Jan and Frank Rulo, and when talking to Alexa's parents, they were quick to mention how sweet, kind, generous, and actually shy, as you can see, Alexa is as a person. They believe that Alexa has a future which includes working with children in some capacity. Her parents stated that Alexa is always willing to help, and actually seems to seek helping others out, especially young children. Alexa loves to spend time with her family, enjoys, uh, being at home as well. Alexa is very active, and balances her social life and schoolwork. When Alexa's not studying or doing schoolwork, she's active in cheerleading and dance. The Rulo's are very proud of Alexa and all that she has accomplished. When talking with Alexa, which she was very nervous about when I asked her to come to the office, she said her favorite subject in school is reading. She mentioned that she's struggled with reading in previous years, however, has really become fond of reading this year with her reading teacher, Mrs. Freed's. She likes and understands that there is much more to reading than reading what is just written. Alexa said she really likes school, she enjoys learning new skills and subjects so that she can be much smarter. She's always trying and wants to do her best work every day. One thing Alexa does not find so enjoyable about school is getting up early. She wishes the school day could start a little later. Some of the outside interests that Alexa enjoys are playing with her friends, helping mom around the house, and sleeping in whenever she has a chance. Alexa cheers for the PT Braves during football season, and competes for the M&amp;M Dance Academy on the hip-hop team. As a matter of fact, they came in second out of 28 teams this week in Boardman, Ohio. Alexa stated that she would like to perform with the encore group here at the high school, and is always looking, and is also looking forward to participating in the musicals at the high school, you came up at the right time of the year. Alexa's teachers identified her as a great girl to be around, she always has a smile on her face, works very hard in school, and is persistent in accomplishing all of her goals. They stated that Alexa has a wonderful attitude and excels in and out of the classroom. She has a passion for learning, and her outlook on education is truly remarkable. The teachers would also like everyone to know that Alexa possesses a compassion for her peers. In a group setting, she balances both work and socialization, she is always likable and very reliable. Alexa, on behalf of McCullough Elementary, I'd like to congratulate you on being the elementary student of the month.
You don't look shy at me. Congratulations, Alexa, you sound like you're a very talented girl.
Thank you.
And I know, I like sleeping in too, so, this is your room.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we're gonna have a student, um, from the middle school level, and that's Mr. Simpson from Penn Middle School.
Thank you, Dr. Harris, the, uh, March Middle School Student of the Month is Anna Choi, Anna, can you come forward, please? Anna's the daughter of Charles and Allison Choi.
She has a brother Matt and a sister Sheree, both here at, uh, high school. Her parents tell me she is their youngest child, but definitely not the least. She was always learning things very quickly, even starting to walk at nine months. She's been blessed with a great memory and can spell even better than her parents. Anna has a soft heart for animals and people. For her birthday one year, instead of her friends buying her gifts, she asked them to bring a donation for an animal shelter. She plans on volunteering this summer at a local animal shelter. They have, uh, two dogs and a cat that she is one of the primary caregivers for. She's a very courageous person, standing up for people who are being teased or bullied, even at the risk of herself, uh, getting teased. Her parents are exceptionally proud of her for that. And has a lot of friends, and she's a loyal friend. She likes to host them at their house on weekends. Anna enjoys spending time shopping with older sister, she's very organized and keeps her room tidy. That, that's something special, that caught my eye there. Uh, she works hard to maintain excellent grades in school. Anna has a lot of fun to be around, and we love having her and her family. We're very blessed that God loaned her to us to raise. Uh, and speaking with Anna, she's just an exceptional, exceptional student, but she's just so humble, she doesn't realize, you know, the great future she's paving the way for herself, I'm, I'm very proud to have her in the building. Her teachers say she's one of the most mature 8th graders they've ever taught. Extremely intelligent, yet humble, uh, she regularly does far and above what is required of her in assignments. And she'll do this not for recognition, but just to do the best job possible. She's a silent leader, leads by example, and she is a team player, always letting someone in the group take the, uh, accolades rather than the, getting the, uh, accolade she deserves. She's a role model, role model student, and one of the best students I've had in my career. Even the great Zimmer said she's one of the fastest typers he's ever had in 18 years, and she types up the 90 words per minute with zero mistakes, which is unheard of. Um, her parents and the staff at Penn Middle School are proud to call her the March Student of the Month, Anna Choi.
Thank you.
Sounds like you have a fan there, Mr. Simpson. That's, that's a good thing to have on your side. Uh, here's your certificate, and, uh, see you in perfect your little.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and finally, we have a representative from the high school, and tonight we have Mr. Sarah Sizzi, and I'll put her, uh, Students of the Month.
Thank you, Dr. Harris, I, I'd like to present to you, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Jack Eisenhaver, come on up, Jack. So, Jack's currently enrolled in all Anna's and Aki level classes here at the high school, where he maintains nearly a 4.2 GPA, and that in and of itself is very impressive. But after talking to Jack, it became more impressive because of the schedule he actually maintains during the, during the week. See, Jack tutors four days a week between Harrison Park and McCullough Elementary, he tutors reading and math, and he doesn't do it because he has to, he does it simply because he wants to. Now, he's there because he's picking up students to take them over to Noah's Kids for his job, on Mondays.
Oh, sorry. Jesus, I thought I had my phone off, sorry.
That's it. Um, on Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. So, instead of simply waiting for the kids, he said, "Then let me put my time to use, let me tutor them." So he started tutoring them. Then he takes them over to Noah's Kids, where he continues to work with the kids throughout the remainder of the evening. Now, he said he gets home roughly 6:00, 6:30, a little, little bit later some nights, but it's Thursday that's the special night for him, that's what he calls his day off. He leaves school and goes to babysit, and then after he's done babysitting, he goes to a scout meeting, that's the day off, all right? He's working on the Eagle Scout badge, and that's no small feat in and of itself. And with the Eagle Scout badge, you have to do a community service type, uh, project. So, Jack told me, basically, he's gonna build an memorial bench for veterans at the Immaculate Conception Church Cemetery in Irwin. And he's doing it because veterans have given so much to everybody else, and oftentimes their services are overlooked. So he's gonna put the bench in, he's gonna do the landscaping, and he's gonna dedicate it, um, hopefully later this spring, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. We're, we're waiting on the weather, right?
Yeah.
So, in looking at this, I found a lot of similarities with what Jack told me and what his teachers told me, and it's about the compassion and the caring he shows for others. Um, the teachers actually commended his volunteerism, and said that his concern for other people is astounding, they've never seen a teenager care more for others than they do for himself. And that, that was something that really struck me. They also said that he's a quiet leader who shines in group activities, and that he's the kind of kid who you'd love to fill your class with. Um, he, I have so many comments here, I'm just gonna go through a couple for you. They said, "You'd like to stay in control, you like to be ahead of the game, you always like to learn, and you'd love to share that knowledge with others when given the chance." Um, they said, "You have a very dry sense of humor and a dry wit, which is enjoyable for them in the classroom." They, they loved to, I'm gonna say joke around and goof around with you. Everybody says you're quiet, but everybody says you're lethal. It's because of these traits that I'd like to present to everybody here, Mr. Jack Eisenhaver from March Student of the Month.
Thank you very much. Every month, I'm more and more amazed, that, how can they get better? But, it just blows me away, you guys are awesome, and I'm sure your parents are very glad to hear yourself. Thank you, thank you again, thank you.
Students of the Month winner, if you can take some up here, we're gonna take a photo to impress together with Mr. Neiman. Bring out your certificates, let's have them hold, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. See, I'm in front of this.
We don't understand why.
Congratulations.
I open that up.
you can leave. No one's ever taken us up on us, if you want to stay here, we'll take off. If not, please go home, enjoy your evening, and thanks for all that you do, because without you, this wouldn't be it.
Thank you.
Congratulations. As the kids are coming, um, leaving, I do wanna go over, tonight, uh, we are approving our new reading series, and it's a large purchase, 323,000 plus some change, but remember, this covers K to 6 reading, and it's according to our textbook cycle that you put in place several years ago, so it's not a new amount, this is a budget amount, we waited the last seven years to get a new series. The last one we had was also by McGraw-Hill, in fact, it's the last one we've had in the last several years. It's always done as well, the company has always been a true supporter of our, um, the reason helps our kids do so well in reading, we've always had successful grades, and we wanna continue with this series. Some of the highlights we discovered when we did our pilot series, um, I had so many teachers wanting to pilot the series, because they actually wanna be the ones who decide what, what we're teaching and have control in it, and that's always great to see. We couldn't choose every teacher, but we had at least six different ones pilot, so we had at least six different grades represented. Um, some of the other series we piloted were Pearson and Holt, and had, both series, teachers sort of stopped in the middle because they realized, um, they weren't a big fan of the series, so we didn't wanna cause any, um, we wanted to kind of change, update some things. But the ones we're choosing, again, is McGraw-Hill's, it's the Wonder Series, there's 12 different key points that we determined, they have, um, plenty questions designed for the DOK, depths of knowledge, they focus on levels 1 through 4, with 1 being the recall facts, and of course, 4 being the performance assessments. It's aligned to the PA Core, um, teachers who did research about it, um, feel that the essential, um, learning that is required of the PA Core is actually found and verified in the book. There is sufficient resources for teachers and parents, teachers will no longer have to go around finding materials to supplement, because I know that's one of the questions that sometimes in the past brought us some concern about why we see all these different worksheets flying around. And there's plenty of resources for parents, when we had our parent core night, one of the biggest concerns for our parents is they need resources to help their children, um, more so in math than reading, but they both had, they both said, "No matter what resource you can give for us to help or tell with the new common core, uh, with the new PA Core, we would appreciate..." This has a lot of different, um, resources for parents as well. There's a strong technology component, the stories are interesting, are relevant to tell you students, the writing component is alignment with how we, um, with one of our goals, which is the PLO approach, um, they have a strong emphasis on grammar as well, students in kindergarten are forming sentences, and having to name nouns and verbs, um, it's teacher-friendly, the teachers can, um, study the data, they can actually plan accordingly, it's not something that they have to go out and reinvent to will. Um, they have cold reads, which is, a cold read is a, when they're tested at the end of the week, in the past, if you noticed, the stories were always tested on after the students had it for the whole entire week. They basically read it, the teacher read it, the parents read it, they acted it out, they talked about it, they discussed it, then they had a test on it. Now, with cold reads, you have all the skills there, but it's actually a new story, so you have to apply all of your skills to a new story, and you might consider it harder, but it's actually gonna be better. There's a strong skills component, um, the last addition was 2014, so it is current and up to date. There is also a program feature for struggling students, as well as a program feature for advanced students, and it's very rigorous, so it's good to have some hard expectations in there, it's what the new requirements are by the state, as we talked about during the last, um, parent meeting. I've had no one give anything negative about the approach on the series, uh, Joe, you have three different teachers piloting your building, do you have any comments?
I do have, um, I'm, I'm fortunate that I have a kindergarten, 2nd, and 3rd grade that are currently piloting the series, and it has been outstanding. Uh, it's a series that is, is well-needed, and it has been very well-received, uh, by the staff, the students found it difficult initially, but, um, as we transitioned through the course of the year, it's been outstanding. Uh, parentally, what you'll see is that it is much more rigorous, um, just as Dr. Harris mentioned. It, it really takes us to that next level of the DOK, as well as infused with the, the technology. I'm, I'm excited, I know the staff is excited, it, the leveled books, as you mentioned, it, it covers those students that are approaching that reading level, that are on that reading level, and beyond that reading level, those leveled books now have the same story, so that all three levels can read the same topic, and the teacher can discuss, uh, that topic as compared to three different ones, uh, in the class. As you mentioned, and as I mentioned, the, the technology, uh, is outstanding as well. We're actually gonna see a true reading grade, uh, in the future with this series, excited, I, I mean, very excited with this.
But keep in mind, I know I piloted, because I was already eight years ago, I was on that committee, we, we did the first one, when it first came in, we had a safe call from parents, uh, this is harder, my grade might be hard, it's gonna suffer, but that first year we did it, and the kids, they were up to the challenge. If you give them something hard, you take them through it, they will do better, and over the last seven years, remember, we had the, the longest time, we had the highest scores in reading for elementary school, and then Westmore County, that's something we've always been proud of, so, we did as well. And to be patient, don't just, when you see the first initial sign of being in heart, come up and say, "Wait a second, my kids can handle it," because they can, and they will, we have good staff, we have good administrators, and our teachers will make sure, they're gonna do a lot of professional development days, to be trained. Sean and Ed, you have a teacher in 1st grade and 5th grade piloting at their building, have you heard anything from Mrs. Miller or Mrs., um...
Uh, I think it's better than what we have, much better, all, all the series were, I just, and it was, it's very much needed.
Appreciate it, and it's, and you really truly don't know that you're lacking material until you go out and see a brand-new series with what they have, and then it really makes you wonder, all right, the last year or so, were we keeping up, and that it kind of explains also why we had to juggle so much and always supplement, because the one thing our teachers do is they wanna make sure that their standards are being taught, and they go out of their way to make sure their skills are being met. So this is gonna actually have better resources, and it's always nice that it's always in mind.
I do appreciate it. Thank you, Sean, thanks, Joe.
Any questions on the reading series? We put a lot of work, but I was a reading specialist for prior years. We're just getting ready, Mr. Noel's not here, time, we wanted to look ahead at the time to see who does action, Mr. Noel's.
So, pick up the, uh, policy. Policy.
And that's all I have to report, Mr. Neiman, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Harris. Um, so this time would be recognition visitors, we have no one signed up to speak tonight, so we, we will move on. May I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report in the high school extracurricular fund resource?
Motion. Motion by, uh, Mr. Leonard.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrusi. Question. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All oppose no? Motion carried. May I have a motion to approve the list of bills for the month of March?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Chassett. Second. Second by Mr. Petrusi. Question. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All oppose no? Motion carried. Any old business tonight?
Not, not missing, Mr. President.
All right, tonight before our regular meeting, we held an executive session where we discussed personnel matters, legal matters, and we received information, uh, on the clerique school. Um, moving on. Uh, athletics and extracurriculars are the cards here.
Thank you, Mr. President, I do have a few things, move to accept the following resignation, Mark Martini, track coach assistant.
Second.
Second by, uh, Mrs. Zissin. Question. Question being called for, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All oppose no? Motion carried.
Move to employ the following personnel effective immediately, new employment is continued upon receipt of all necessary documentation and the acceptance of Act 34-151 and 114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within 30 days. Brenda Haas, Spring Musical Costume Co-Coordinator, Ee Sudak, Boys Assistant Tennis Coach, and Lenita Meyer, Spring Musical Costume Co-Coordinator.
Second. Second by Mr. Leonard. Question. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All oppose no?
I just happened to look up to see if Brenda was back there, she was in Georgia tonight, you just, you just texted her, Brenda's one of our writers for the Georgia paper.
Motion carried.
Okay, move to approve the following volunteer coaches, all coaching volunteers must have Act 34-151 and 114 waivers and file with the athletic record. Joe Hudak, Boys Tennis Volunteer Assistant Coach, and Megan Hudak, Boys Tennis Volunteer Assistant Coach.
Second. Second by Dr. Trey. Question being called for, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All oppose no? Motion carried.
That'll be all, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Koshko, uh, budget and finance, Mr. Chassett.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, move to approve expenditures relating to the high school renovation project, according to the schedule as listed.
Second. Second by Mr. Petrusi. Questions? Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All oppose no? Motion carried.
Move to approve the 20-month extension to the comdoc contract.
Second. Second by Dr. Trey. Question. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All oppose no? Motion carried.
And so I have this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chassett, buildings and ground safety, Mr. Leonard.
I have nothing tonight, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard, uh, employee relations, negotiations, and transportation, Mrs. Zissin.
Nothing to report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Zissin, uh, food service, Dr. Trey.
Nothing reported this time, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Trey, personnel and curriculum, Mr. Petrusi.
Thank you, Mr. President, move to approve additional substitute teachers support personnel for the month of March 2015.
Second. Second by Mr. Chassett. Question. Question being called for, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All oppose no? Motion carried.
Move to accept the following retirement resignation effective the end of 2014-15 school year, Robert Abraham, Karen Andrews, Joanne Gates, Barbara Coontz, Chris Faes, Connie Vastov, and Patty Ventura.
Second. Second by Mr. Leonard. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote.
Can I make a comment at this time?
Sure, absolutely.
This is really to the, to those individuals, I've known many of them for well over 20-some years, and came into the district with several of them, we're, we're losing a fine, a fine group of educators, good people, and, uh, wish them very good stuff to life, that's all.
And when Tom and I made, I was gonna wait after that, together, I know there's seven names, but seven names represent 245 years of teaching, if you combine them, 136 years were in the district, in the county, in our, I'm sorry, in Penn Trafford District, so, I appreciate everything they did, and they will be honored at the end of the year, we will have other retirements come in June again, and to thank them for all they did, as well as Mrs. Perkins, who retired, she might aspire as well, just, much as.
Okay, thank you, um, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All oppose no? Motion carried.
Our next question about field trip request here for the robotics team, and you're on the Vote Tech representative, all my students going to anti-robotics, it's, uh, it's a big joy, it's very challenging, very educational, I'm glad to see we have a student here getting involved with it. All right, uh, move to approve the following field trip request, Jeff Newsen, VEX Robotics Team Competition in Philadelphia, February 27th to March 1st, he will be taking two students to compete in the Pennsylvania State VEX Robotics Tournament, that costs the district approximately $1,102.
Second. Second by Mr. Leonard. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All oppose no? Motion carried.
Move to approve the following conference request, Samantha Carney, AP Summer Institute in Chemistry in Morgantown, West Virginia, from June 23rd to 26th, 2015, that costs approximately $1,500. Brenda Crestalite, AP Summer Institute, AP, AP Studio Art in Morgantown, West Virginia, from June 23rd to 26th, 2015, that costs approximately $1,002. And Brett Kymer, speaking, a first-year teacher at International Technology Engineering Education Association in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, from March 24th to 28th, 2015, California University, will cover all the expenses.
Second. Second by Mr. Chassett. Question. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All oppose no? Motion carried.
Move this professional contract to the following teacher in accordance with Section 1108 of school laws of Pennsylvania, this teacher has satisfied, completed three years of teaching in the Penn Trafford School District, Patrick Flynn, Spanish teacher at Penn Trafford High School.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Zissin. Question. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of... All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
Just to add something about Patrick. I know it says three years. He actually started here as a student teacher, and then he was a long-term start for the longest time as well. Patrick is just amazing, and every single day, what he does in his classroom with Spanish, the enthusiasm he brings from whether it's period one to the end of the day. I had it, my son had him for open house last year. It was the very last one of the day he went to. He still had all the enthusiasm, the excitement. And he is just amazing, and he loves his language. So, I'm glad that he's here, and like I said, three years is actually a little bit longer, but it was a bit higher, so thank you.
Okay, motion carried.
Move to confirm the following makeup days as designated. Approved school calendar 2014-15 school year. The school close days include, whether, Thursday, February 19th, and Friday, February 20th. The makeup days are Thursday, April 2nd, and Monday, April 6th.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Leonard.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to accept the following resignation, Lindsay Grush, math tutor at Penn Mills School effective March 9th, 2015. And Sharon Koschko, paraprofessional at Penn Mills School, effective February 23rd, 2015.
Seconded by Dr. Koschko.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following personnel. New employees continued upon receipt of all necessary documentation and extends of Act 34-151 and 114 waivers for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within 30 days. Super substitutes effective February 23rd, 2015, as substitute at their daily rate. Joyce Canyon, Vicki Daly, Ashley Dureto, Nicole Nelavenco, Gina Pipack, Joshua Radinsky, Elizabeth Strain, and Stephanie Walker. And Miss Alainus, as substitute rates, unless otherwise noted, Timothy Bianchi, Casey Whitaker, and to be determined, math tutor at Penn Mills School, and to determine biology tutor at Penn, at Penn Chapel High School.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Kachasik.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following FMLA leave extension request. Nicolette Stute, extension of FMLA leave from March 2nd to the 12th, 2015, and then unpaid leave from March 13th to April 2nd. Long-term salary will be James O'Connor.
Second. Seconded by Dr. Trey.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following textbooks, 2015-16 school year, that are in textbook pledge according to the textbook cycle. Dr. Harris just gave us a prime presentation with his support of Mr. Renear and McGraw-Hill in prices, $323,486.46.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Kachasik.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Petrusi. Policy, public relations, legislative title to Mr. Dr. Trey, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to accept the following minutes of the superintendent's information committee meeting held on Monday, February 2nd, 2015.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
For the second motion, caveat, this partnership that we're addressing in the motion, we've had for almost 30 years, probably longer, Mr. Petrusi, would you say, with student assistance, 35 years? It's been very successful, very helpful, done a lot for kids. The motion is to move to approve the student assistance program agreement for the 2015-16 school year between the Penchaville School Leadership, Westmore County Drug and Alcohol Commission, and the Westmore County Behavioral Health and Developmental Services Program. The district agrees to cooperate in the development of the student assistance program initiative in accordance with the current student assistance program guidelines of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Petrusi.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the special education plan for July 1st, 2015, through June 30th, 2018, as presented before.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Leonard.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
And I want to thank Greg Turese for taking care of all that for the district, too, to excellent our trade.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt the resolution authorizing our president to electronically sign any contracts, agreements, grants, and/or licenses with the Department of Education.
Second.
Question.
Seconded by Mr. Dr. Koschko. Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote.